Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in an open session will be recorded. We've been noticed a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 8th at 7:00 PM in the planning board room. Town Hall, Pembroke, Mass. 02359. On the application of J.C. Pembroke LLC. Care of James Costello, 38 Parish Farms Road. East Bridgewater, Mass. 02333. Requesting site plan approval under the zoning bylaws of the town of Pembroke. Section 57. Site plan approval for additional patio space next to the deck with a fire pit with additional seating. The property is located in a business district A, zoning district located at 300 Center Street, Pembroke, Mass. 02359. As shown as the assessors map, C7 lot 25. As advertised in the Pembroke Mariner Express on Friday, July 22nd, 2016 and Friday, July 29th, 2016. Since the principals aren't here, should we make a motion to postpone?
I move that we adjourn for 10 minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any other business we can take up?
We could talk, we could do the minutes of correspondence, which is the Solsom Way, the tree. I guess which means locating, figuring out which tree it is, if it's one of the new ones that was put in or one of the old ones.
What's that?
There's a tree up on Solsom Way. I guess DPW pointed out that the tree has died.
I will take a ride up tomorrow and verify that.
For Dandel?
For Dandel.
Okay.
I got the impression it's one of the new ones.
Well, we'll find out that. We have response in the class. I also, besides being a planning member, I also work for Dandel.
Any of that guaranteed to work, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, so that will take care of that. There's bills going around if you guys can sign on that green thing.
I have a question about the town center in the Smith property. Did we allow equipment up front in our special permit?
Yeah, but how's it gonna load it if you don't allow it up there?
Not for display. He's not selling heavy equipment?
No, when I went by the staff doing, there was nothing on fire.
There wasn't? Okay, because when it was ready, there was.
Are you here for the public hearing?
Hi, for the restaurant?
Yeah. We're adjourning for 10 minutes, we're waiting for them to show up.
Okay, are you sitting here or are you going outside?
This is it.
Yeah, the problem is that front becomes a working space.
I didn't think they were supposed to be storing equipment.
No, but the problem is that in the course of the day, early in the morning, truck pulls up, another truck pulls up, they're not gonna keep moving that piece of stuff up back. They're gonna keep it there.
You're gonna need a little consumer lock-in type thing. You're parked up front, you get a couple of plants. No, what you permitted was a landscape operation. End of the story. Get all the things you get with it.
I'm curious as to how successful he's been with these plans.
You're forgetting, he didn't apply for it. Your season's gone by him.
He's trying to get the fall.
It's the fall season.
He's gonna get to next spring.
If you don't mind, maybe just write down your name.
Well, it doesn't help if there's a construction zone all up and down the east street, which doesn't, no.
All right. We can also, I guess we can move this vote to appoint representative to long-term revenue and growth subcommittee that 813. Which I think.
So are there two things with this thing? What is the request for a three-year plan?
Right.
That's going to be discussed at a one-on-one meeting and to be determined. And who's gonna attend it? I would assume you are gonna attend the meeting?
I guess so. I wasn't planning on preparing a three-year operational plan or a five-year capital plan.
Well, that was, wait, 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 wait. That was, that was sent around to departments that actually have.
Three-year and five-year.
Have capital.
Like DPW.
This is not really for us.
Well, do we need to ask, you know, for example, if we ever hope in the next three years to get a computer or printer? Do we have to speak now or are we holding our peace?
I don't think you need, I don't, I think that's, I think that's different.
Might be a good time.
Yeah, but I.
Suppose we bring up in our annual budget?
Unless you wanna go for counsel, I mean, if you wanna bring up having.
That's not capital.
It is if you're, if you're gonna set up an annual account. It's, it's looking towards, how do you do it? All right? We've gone before this before.
I didn't fit out.
So I mean, that would be one thing, because we don't really have a budget. And the annual budget for, for materials, like 1,200 bucks.
Yes, not much. And advertising is the other big piece of the budget.
Right.
But what about something, just thinking from a capital standpoint? One thing you may wanna consider is all these files getting scanned and stored properly for quick, for quick look-up. I mean, that would be a capital.
First off, when I'm back to the master plan, we're talking about needing funding for. That may be the other thing.
That may be the other thing too, yeah. And I think that.
And maybe some.
Well, this is, we've got numerous ideas here. Let's write up all them and send them up to the chief.
We talked about, you know, a planner positioning.
Yeah, and some of those capital. I'm not sure that, that's capital, but.
Well, no, it's also a three-year operational.
Okay.
Sure of something like a computer falls into capital or.
That's, that sounds like capital to me. Or a project that would scan everything and store it for us, sounds like a capital expense.
It's a one-time, yeah.
I think you will get, who knows? But I do know when it come out to the, to all the departments that have, you know, actually have manpower and things like that.
I wonder if there's any grants out there for planning boards to, you know, scan and store files for, you know, existing subdivisions? I wonder if it's worth peeking around and see if there's any money out there for that kind of project?
Yeah, but I'll be asking the stuff on disk anyway. We do, we've always asked for stuff on disk anyway. We just never had anything to do anything with it. We've never had a computer we could load it up to or be able to view it.
The assessors office does, though, I think DPW might.
With third-party cloud storage or something, that would.
Yeah.
Give us the opportunity to access it.
Well, even if we got a scanner, so we start in the very near future, everything that comes in that we scan and store that way versus in files, it would at least stop the files getting bigger.
Yeah, because letters we still get in hard copy for. We don't get those electronically for the most part.
We can't scan.
Except our own.
It would be an enormous undertaking. Who am I sure of this?
In order to do everything, yes, but going forward, won't that machine scan?
I think, I think we need an assessment of, an assessment. I think it probably does, I'm not sure.
All right, so it's time to reopen the public hearing.
And we don't have our applicant here?
We do not have our applicant here, which I've never had this happen before, so I'm not really sure.
Have they decided, did they?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for two weeks until our next meeting.
All right, so we have a motion to continue.
Yeah, we do.
I guess my only, my only question is this, the applicant's not here, but the abutters are. And is there any precedent for asking the abutters to express any opinions about the project before we continue the public hearing?
Yeah.
So that they don't have to come back?
But as much as I.
We're not holding a public hearing?
Well, it's open.
Well, it's open, we have a public hearing underway.
Yeah, but as much as.
But as much.
We're missing an applicant. I know, but as much as I hate to waste the.
The applicant's the key body.
Yeah, the, the abutters' time, which, you know, on behalf of the applicant, I apologize for. No one, there's no one to answer their questions.
Right.
Or our questions.
Or our questions.
And we can't penalize them because they're not here.
Yeah, right.
So all we have an action to do is to continue a public hearing. If they choose not in the future to not come again.
Yeah, two weeks at a time certain.
Eventually, we will say, you don't have a site plan approval, building inspector, et cetera, cease and desist and continue the permitting and on removal.
Do you think they were confused by getting the selectman's approval of the liquor and other permits? If they didn't think they had to go back?
I would hope not. Mr. Chairman, do we have anything scheduled for two weeks from today?
That I do not have.
At 7:00 PM? Or a date or a time certain?
Matt, do we have anything on the schedule?
I don't think there is an agenda yet for two weeks.
Okay.
I'll make motion, as I said, to continue the public hearing until which date, Matt?
It would be the 22nd?
22nd of August.
What time?
7:00. 7:00 PM.
I apologize to you folks. So we have first, we have a motion and second.
So we'll be hearing this again on April, August 22nd at 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that.
You know, in the future, maybe, maybe liquor license and things shouldn't be given out until there's approval of the site plan.
It's covered since then.
Well, it's a likely decision. All right, so we.
You knew they should run a routing stuff, but everything.
For liquor licenses.
Yeah, because really, it could be a board issue and they give them a liquor license. Then it's the wrong message, isn't it?
Should we ask George if he's had any contact with him about this? Now, he was leaving just as we came in. You were here for the, for the bar?
Yes.
Old Olivares?
Yes.
So we just continued it for two weeks because the applicant didn't show up?
Oh, you didn't, okay.
So August 22nd at 7:00.
Okay, how many people you expect to be or something like that?
Just the applicant usually.
Yeah, you and the other. I live across the street from it, so this is the first time I've ever went there.
So sometimes a lot of neighbors show up for something like this and sometimes no one shows up, except the applicant. But usually the applicant shows up.
My only complaint is I just pull out of there and they hit my mailbox, that's about it.
All right, well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you everyone. Keep that in mind, as they occupy a single-family home somehow attached to a restaurant. Notice that? There's two cars every day. It's like, that's not a single-family home attached to a restaurant, by the way. That's a restaurant with no residential attached. There is no mixed use in this town except in the center.
That used to be what, a pizza place or?
Oh, it's been a size thing.
No, the other one, the small little white house.
They used it for a drive-through for about 10 minutes.
About 10 minutes.
The only time, the only time we allowed people to live in there was when the owner, their principal residence burnt down. And we said, we'll give you a temporary ability to stay in the house while you get your life together. Oh well, this man has new rights to a single-family home on that lot. Consequently, get the hell out of it. How's that sound for the reporter?
Well, I.
Those are some of the things I was saying that don't necessarily need to go into the minutes.
Well, I bet it'll be on tape.
Don't worry about it, put it in there if you wish.
Well, I do recall that.
There are no problems with my statement.
That's what employees were gonna be parking, so I have a little bit of a parking there.
All right, so we have an informal site plan at 7:45 and so much we're getting out early. I don't think we're getting on.
Question, where are they coming in?
Who? Anybody else like to go?
No, thanks.
Wow, we're gonna kill a lot of time here, huh?
Who's got an informal site plan?
We got a seventh then in 7:45.
There you go. Great, now you're, you're up.
It's your turn.
Are you calling yourself?
Yeah, oh, come on. Oh, this is me now?
You're right.
All right, beautiful.
Geez, by 7:00 at the show.
A cancellation.
We're making it early.
Put you on the express.
Yeah, it's a, what the hell did I have? I got a property that's down there on Manichees Street, right by, right by, was it Svestal Munder? The boat you had placed there? And I assume it, well, it's been on the market, I guess, for quite a while. Probably had to go through here four or five times. And I was just, I thought, I just wanted to know what would be acceptable there. Because I suddenly tried everything, houses and.
Which one is it? Which lot is it?
It's, I believe it's 160.
Talking about the five acres?
Place here, then they get the small house on there.
You're talking about the five acres?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that right by Wintergreen?
Is it Wintergreen?
Yeah, Wintergreen Street runs right up there.
Oh, is it a lawn like?
It's a lot.
It's a big lawn thingy.
What's the frontage on the way?
86 feet, I believe it is.
You got a problem.
I know. I think everybody's had it from, my thought was, I had one house there. What I was thinking of doing is put another house on it and maybe have a retail out front. But that's like.
You haven't got the frontage.
I understand.
So if they're gonna do retail, you'd have to have like 225 feet.
Over 150.
It's 150 residents.
But that's in a business area. It's outside the, outside the central protection district.
Yeah. So I didn't know what's allowable here with that 60, I mean, that 86 feet. Even, even a house lot or something like that is what, quite 150 or something? Yeah, so I didn't know if there's any use for this land or not.
Well, you're right about one thing, it's been presented before.
Oh, yeah, sure, because I know it's been up for, at least eight, 10 years or something like that. Pretty close to it.
Well, originally, I think there was, there was interest when Wintergreen was going in to purchase that property from whoever owned it at the time.
Yeah.
And that was prior to me even being on the board when that first portion of that went in. And they resisted selling it, because they could have, they could have picked up that property and probably incorporated it, I thought, at the time.
Into Wintergreen?
Yeah, in the first phase of that.
And then he said it was stripped down some?
Well, whoever owned it didn't want it, want it too much, or there was, you know, you know how it goes. When you think you get gold.
Yeah, you'd go, you'd want to hold up at a top dollar. And I just didn't see, I mean, it's, it's still for sale and I didn't know what the hell you could actually put in there, to tell the truth. From what I understand, I guess they wanted house stables there, they wanted greenhouses there, they wanted flower shops, the houses, all that stuff. So I assume there's not too many things left to do, but.
We probably could have greenhouses there. But the only thing you could probably have. Yeah, but you, yeah, but you still have to have. Fire views, you can build house structures.
Or retail sales.
No, you couldn't do that, but you could grow stuff there. Well, it's one other thing, it's one other thing you could do.
Solar, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Solar farm?
Oh, solar farm.
Solar right there.
Yeah, solar farm?
That's about it.
Who owns that piece right there?
Next door.
They'll try, I forget her name, but I asked her, she's not selling.
She's not?
That's a single-family home right next to it, right?
Yes, it is. Both sides.
I believe that was built by Habitat for Humanity.
Oh, really?
Was that the one on the right side?
Yeah, which could have actually put that, all that property together.
On the other side. So there's a little one right here and then there's this treading here.
Well, there's two houses on either side of that lot.
Right.
And one is a house that's at the opening where that, that commercial space goes, where you have some commercial operations.
Sergio?
Yeah, Sergio.
Yeah, that was Sergio.
This piece here you're talking about?
Yeah, either way, it's, it's closed by other, other residential properties.
If we had pork chop lots, it would be perfect. Well, we don't.
Yeah, that's the only thing that goes there, you know, you don't do the.
We don't do, we pull them out along.
Yeah, even then, it's probably not that much you're gonna do in there, but a house, even a pork chop.
In five acres? In five acres, you could put quite a few.
About a pork chop lot?
No, well, we don't, we don't allow it.
No, I understand, I understand, it's just.
Our pork chop lot was 40 feet of road frontage. And two and a half acres in size.
We had pork chop lots around in this area where some people think they have suburbs.
And do, tell you what the building inspector issues a building permit for and do whatever the hell he wants. You know, the objections of this board.
Right.
We'd have to take them to court, turn that decision around.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot.
Do you know who owns that property?
Is that where Cat Fab is and the boats?
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Yeah, that's all boats there.
Because I was saying, you know, you try to pull those two properties together and.
That's, you know, that's, you're not gonna do that, be able to that. You got enough problems, right, you got enough problems in that piece of property right now with violations of.
No, no, what you're talking about is putting that.
You're talking about this. She's totally adding it to this one, which is.
Oh, I see.
Which is, which is the one we have problems with constantly.
You got buildings there. Yeah, there's a bunch of buildings there. And a cell, and a cell tower.
You got buildings over here.
He's got a cell, he's got, he's got a cell tower back here.
I'm thinking that if this is gonna have value, somebody comes in.
It's all chalked up already. We actually did in the last lot.
But that doesn't help him.
Now, do you want this or you're thinking about buying this?
I'm thinking about buying it, but I wasn't gonna buy it until I knew there was something you could put there and then, well, it can be a one-house, right?
No.
No?
Even though the house is on there?
Oh, the house is already there?
Oh, there's a house on there.
The house is there, it's there, but you can't take it down and then put another one on it.
Can't be built in there.
No, no, I mean, I mean, the house is there.
So you can renovate the house that's existing.
And a barn, there's a barn and an existing house on it. That's basically what it is. It's a house lot. If you took the house down, you'd never do nothing with it.
You're done.
Anybody that lives there?
No, I don't think that's living there. It's probably vacant for a year anyhow, maybe more. But the house is still there. Pretty good shape, it's just a small, small, small house.
It's like 600, 600.
Yeah, it's, it's probably 20 by 25 or something.
But this is showing.
Barn's a little bit bigger. Barn's probably a 24 by 30 or something like that.
I don't think it's 160. Is that the right address?
I don't, it was 154 across the street, so I think it's like 153, 155.
Yeah, it's not 160.
Something like that.
No, I'm gonna.
Well, I don't think you get any complaint from this board in terms of if you just replace what's there. Obviously, they would have rights under grandfathering, so.
Now, if you did that, could that house, that house could be a large sort of stand aside, something.
Sound like a call?
Oh, okay.
The building inspector. You'd have to go to him and do what you're doing with us. Essentially, if you're grandfathering something, basically, we don't have any, any oversight. You know?
I was just, I mean, the reason to have the meeting with you people is to see what was possible on that.
Yeah, you can't go ahead and hold it. So it depends on living there, it's probably.
That's about it.
It's a tough spot, though.
Oh, it is, it is, it's a tough spot.
Because you come, even if you're coming out of there, it's like right on that corner.
It's a dangerous spot. You may have had a hard time coming out of there. It's all blind.
Imagine coming out of there, if you come out of there in the winter.
Come down the hill.
Yeah, slip right on into the, into the Manichees.
Okay, let me answer some of my questions.
All right, good luck.
I'll just go with that. I guess I can take the next couple of weeks off. It takes a lot.
For another piece of land?
Yeah. But all the towns are starting to cancel those pork chop lots, huh? I see a couple of other towns has changed it too.
Yeah, this has been going since, how long back? 20 years, 25 at least?
Are there still quite a few of those around? Much.
We have, there's a couple of them.
Does that even double the acreage, I mean, the doubled lot size? From 30 to 60 thousand, a bit different house.
You have a problem and no worth.
Yeah, it is. We've got a couple of others on the same wavelength.
Probably a problem till 5:00.
Okay, thanks a lot.
It's all to all these homeowners who want more land.
All right, so.
That the only thing you can do?
Well, I mean, a lot of that, that labor is big on pools and things, so some of those people might not actually mine.
Well, you buy a house then.
Having extra land to do something like that.
Some of them can buy a house, rip it down, even though it's been a lot for a pretty road end. If the land was better than that piece of property, you weren't up against the thing. Now you could, you could put like three or four houses, maybe, in there. It's still in 150, you're on the road there. No, but you, if you buy a house on.
I'm gonna green, take the house down.
Take it down.
Those are nice houses.
I'll pick it up and spin it.
Well, if it's worth a half a million, half a million dollars to buy the house lot and then you get the other property for nothing, maybe you make it work.
Yeah, all right, so if we jump back to the appointing a representative for the long-term revenue growth subcommittee.
What about proposed road acceptance question?
Revenue growth.
They're coming in at 8:00.
Oh, okay, they're coming in, okay. So this long-term revenue growth subcommittee, this is a subcommittee of which board? Subcommittee of Board of Selectment?
Yeah. So we have double off fees, okay? We're gonna generate a.
No, I think this is about revenue growth, meaning looking at other economic development in town.
Are the top one maybe change, how we change our zoning or?
They're talking about, they're talking about if we have a department still have a three-year plan, a five-year.
No, 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 but that's different from this long-term revenue growth subcommittee, because we ran into Patrick the other night.
But isn't there only revenue taxation and that's based on what zones we have around town? So the other way we could actually roll.
This is the email I got, representative from the financial offices. Board of Selectment and School Committee will come together to form a subcommittee devoted to long-term revenue growth. They have asked that a representative in the planning board join us to this subcommittee. So they'd like to want us to vote to appoint a representative to the subcommittee tonight.
All right, so do you want this?
Well. I do not.
Do you want to? I'd be interested in if nobody wants to do it. I think it sounds interesting.
If you wanna do it, do it.
Who's doing all colony planning?
Um, the ultimate, yeah.
Do you wanna do it, though?
To what, the revenue growth?
We'd rather appoint somebody who wants this job.
And I, I would be interested.
All right, so would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Becky Coletta to the role of planning board representative to the long-term revenue growth subcommittee.
So they're not coming in, are they?
All in favor?
Are they taking it? Aye.
Aye. Was that discussion, I'm sorry?
No. I said, are they actually coming in or was it just, was that the end of it? I mean, I'm just looking at how it collapses big time.
Are we in Equestrian Way?
I didn't even know if we needed to see them.
Well, maybe we get a call, can we get a call into them? See if they can shuffle or.
Is this Owen Kelly?
Yeah.
Do we have an asphalt plan of it yet? And the answer is no. Do we have an asphalt?
We don't have an asphalt for the Equestrian Way. How are we gonna talk about proposed road acceptance?
Well, I, I mentioned to Matt the other day to contact the developer, whoever this representative of, the developer was, because he would slot some opinion about whether they should come in or not.
Well, we also have a deadline too. We happen to have the asphalt in by about now.
Yes.
The exact date.
To hit fall 10.
I think it's August 12th. Yeah.
So we have to grant an extension.
No, no, they have to go, they have to come back next year. We need, we, we discovered.
We're saying for road acceptance, because it's not hit our August deadline.
Correct. Right, because they, you know, the week before, town, town phone meeting.
How many times?
They would be putting a mast down and, you know, following weeks off there.
Yeah, but they're pretty well along on that stuff there. I mean, they're pretty, pretty done on everything. The only thing we're waiting for is the asphalt, but most of the work that they've done is all done. I mean, the trees are in, everything's in, everything's, everything's buttoned up.
Except cleaning up the, the front of it, that drives me crazy every time.
Well, that would be one item that we wanna, we wanna be contingent. But the other issue, though, is that, that, that easement, that bothers me a little bit about. There's an easement going into the back property that.
Pheasant?
Pheasant, to go to a pheasant land.
Pheasant land.
But the easement is in such a place where there's no curb cut for it. And the, the landowner behind it has made clear her intentions to actually open up that easement now and start using it to get in and out of her property.
Where is it, though? So right now, if I go down.
It's the last one.
Is that good on pheasant?
It's the very end, good on pheasant, you make a left in there, right?
But why would I go in that way? Because you can go in straight, right?
They were granted an easement when the subdivision was approved. And that easement's there.
She's playing pheasal.
Because, yeah, that making the case.
I can explain why it's an easement there.
Okay.
To recall, we have a thousand-foot dead-end street restriction, right? So the plan is if you use the. So the plan is if you use the easement and turn it back into Pheasant Lane, you don't have a dead-end road. You just have a big loop, loop. So, um, the, about our Melissa Deloche, who's been well-known in town, um, is, had sought this easement at the end of this way. Board granted it. The hope is, is that she'll get rid of her pig farm, ostrich farm, kangaroo farm, dew room farm, whatever she's calling it recently farmed, and that she would be able to loop and come back out onto Pheasant Lane and there would be house lots, house lots granted around the way.
Oh, so.
So it's a mighty makeup.
So the expectation was at some point that if you look at.
Correct.
Pheasant going into Equestrian.
Here's one thing we can require.
How do you put a road over something that's property even if there's an easement?
But what I don't understand, so, so that makes sense to me, right?
For the purpose of getting access into the back of the lot.
For future use.
Not for a road.
Oh, no.
So, right, she could, she can come out here, or she can come out the existing entrance exit. What, so what I don't understand is if she has a permanent easement granted, why would she start to use it now?
First off, she actually.
And furthermore, even if she wanted it, even though there's an easement in the ground, whose cost is that? Hers?
Hers usually.
Yeah, so Paul's saying, or somebody said, yeah, no, it's blocked off, there's no, maybe he said, there's no signs of it in the way, well, who builds that?
She'd have to.
Well, first off.
There's not one there.
Hold on, hold on.
She'd have to.
She has to go build it, she has to go build it if it's accepted.
No, she'd need an apartment for DPW to.
Yeah, but if it's accepted, we, we'd have.
So we can impose a cost upon him, or this developer.
If we accept it, then DPW has to deal with it, so let's accept it.
Who owns the easement?
The easement was given by the developer, should the owner.
Given. The easement. Who owns the property that the easement is on?
The homeowner at the end.
The homeowner at the end, so if you wanna put a road across my property, you gotta buy it.
Yes, that's my point.
Right.
There's only an easement, there can't be a road.
Right.
Right.
It was all, it's not.
And if you don't come to an agreement, you don't have a deal. You got it. Right.
It's not really.
We knew we were blocking the rain. I would love that easement. I would love that easement.
Well, there was also the other reason that, the other reason that went in is we also, we also gained property for open space.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, that I understand.
And it was upland.
People can walk across that, but you can't, if you're gonna put a road in, that's a.
Well, she has no curb cut.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't like it was designed for a road for access.
It's a matter, it's unresolved, it's trying to get access.
Owen.
Owen. Do we have a phone number for him?
Do we have a phone number for Owen?
Yeah, you should have a notebook for him.
Tracy gave it to me, I'm not sure if I still have that.
But I wouldn't be, I wouldn't rush to accept a road.
Well, the only thing is, first off, is that the asphalt's have to be in hand, number one.
Start with.
Just that one. Um, the road, you know, the idea is, is that you're gonna end up being able to go out there and walk very quickly, look at this, if it's not complete, it's not complete, there is issues on the front.
Matthew, you might wanna try in the, in the folder, just see if there's a folder for Equestrian and look.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep extending it. And then all of a sudden, be in September sometime, looking at this thing as, as being finished. If they hadn't made the, met the deadline, just go, guys, you didn't meet the deadline.
What are we talking about? They're talking about.
Except for, for only except.
No, 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 we're talking about them picking up the dime on snowplow.
Exactly.
Okay, until now, until next April. So, sorry, if you don't show up, you didn't hit the deadline, that's the way it goes.
But they probably know they're bringing in the asphalt's tonight.
Well, it could be, but there is further improvements or, you know, we should send our engineer.
I think they have, I think what happens is asphalt goes to Merrill Lynch to review the asphalt, review the project completely, report to Wallace and.
I was down there a week ago, there's, there's a lot of little stuff still done, you know? After the cop on the road where Becky just pointed out, um, all those cobble, all that vertical granite carving. There's no, there's no backfill, and there's no joint, uh, compounding, if you will.
Right.
In terms of the concrete of those between the sections, all of that is detail work, but nevertheless, it's nothing done. You got some spaces in between the vertical granite carving that are like this.
It's not right.
It's butt up against.
Yeah, exactly, you go up there and look at it, you're gonna see what I saw.
So as soon as the asphalt comes in, then, then the board asks our engineer and DPW to goes, look at it, but if it's not here.
Yeah.
When is the. To the August 12th? No. What's that? Was it August 12th? All you're doing is. I think it's August, yes, it's August 16th, it's in, it's in.
We're at the right time.
It's in that hour, isn't it, issue? It's in the middle of it.
We're not gonna meet again, obviously, until at least August 20th.
So if they don't have it in here tonight, you know.
Yeah, we know we're doing our own.
I think we had to, like, have the opportunity to go out and walk it before mid-August. Just remember, we're always having, the catch basins, all that, we used to have to go out there. It was both, I think it was mostly grass and trees and stuff, so we could see that it made it through winter and.
Right. One thing's for sure, once we bring it up for acceptance, if it isn't up to our full conditions, why would we want to approve it if we were?
Well, the only thing, the only. We're not knowing since. Right, but the only, the only.
There's no compelling reason for us to have to go back to that, that we don't fix it out of a set price.
It also is a tax pay, I don't wanna take and put something on the warrant that costs us to print, costs us to go up and then defend that we've taken it off, so then we have to take it off. If we, why, why, if it's not worth, they're not have the time to get it to us right away.
Well, you gotta get it to us in time, in fact.
Yeah, understood, but we're also scheduled to be here at eight o'clock and we give it the opportunity to talk.
No, they never come through. We'll just plan ahead.
However, given that it's not eight o'clock, can we go back to the subject?
Yes.
Now we've got a representative to the long-term revenue growth subcommittee. Maybe we can have some talking points where I represent what I think they're looking for.
Okay, done.
Where are the areas of growth in the tax base? It's a fundamental part, there's not another department on here, you know, that raises revenues really, except for maybe the assessors, you know, through the use of assessment and taxation. The key point this board plays is, what are we looking at as developable? Um, we approved Doggy Daycare, we've approved the mental health condition place, we're looking at five buildings on Oak Street that wanna go up. We have several acres of land up in that area that is certainly developable. I mean, we could raise potentially if that whole thing were developed though, an half a million a year. That's where I knew they're not even counting yet. I was watching one of the meetings a few weeks ago, they're all up in, they wanna sell ball signs in the ballpark and stuff like that. And say, come on, guys, make big, come on. We gotta think townwide.
Yeah.
You gotta know how many signs you're selling in the baseball field or something.
Do we have enough room up there for a small hotel?
Oh, yeah.
You think there's enough room there behind Stop and Shop?
For two.
Oh, yeah, I mean, take out the, uh, you gotta think too, not only what's in the ground, but what is it redevelopable as?
What's already cheap enough that it could be redeveloped?
Some of those tunnels off, some of the buildings.
Look, the guy comes in here a year ago or so from, uh.
The tennis, the old tennis.
The landscaping place too, not only the ball court place, right, what can I do on my lawn? You know, what a lack of imagination, when you think about it, solve my problem, I can't think. You know, look at it any given day in any city area you go, something's here for twenty, thirty, forty years, the next day it's gone and something comes out big.
Yeah, you could take.
Take a look at New York City.
Yeah.
Okay, when you can't think wide, think tall.
You are right, the, where's the nearest hotel? It's a little.
Back in the original master plan, we even made provisions to put a hotel.
We did.
We increased the height.
We brought in the words hotel, we brought in the four stories, and we did it fifteen years ago, almost.
Right.
All right, so my point for long-term revenue growth is new growth.
What about, uh, this, just a question, what about, um. I know we, we have application, developers, when they apply, they're paying basically engineering fees, do we, do we charge just a flat application fee?
Yeah, those are.
Yeah, that's a twenty-five hundred, or whatever we decide if it's a smaller.
Yeah, a thousand dollars, uh, that goes in the general fund.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's, I think, to the point, that's nibbling at the edges with fees.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, you know, do we, do we kinda stop doing the, you know, oh, it's Joe Smith, it's like two fifty.
Yeah, but we also wanna encourage that growth and we wanna encourage some development that's gonna add to the tax base.
Right.
I think, I've never seen us waive a fee though, when you get a RK centers for it, comes before us. Oh, we're poor little guys, can we get half the cost? No, you're a multi-billion dollar company.
But usually they're gonna end here with your. Some of the easier people to work with, cause they understand how, how zoning works, they understand.
But like three hundred Center Street, we didn't try to stand in their way with a large upfront fee.
Well, because it's already.
Cause it's already built, and we were just looking for methods.
So they paid, five hundred dollars was the fee, and then the fifteen hundred was the engineering.
But I think if, if, if we go back to the master plan and we go back to thinking about where development should happen, that Route Three exit there is a perfect place to attract something that would add to the tax base significantly.
Right.
So, you know, I think part of it may be, you know, we don't have a Pembroke Economic Development, you know, spokesperson or director who could go out and do that. That may be a role that we could find for someone who's already, you know, in an elected position or doing something related, you know, to planning. So that, that's a role that we may wanna look at, trying to beef up a little bit, to actually go out and court some of these larger companies who may be interested in coming to Pembroke. Um, to remember Pembroke Woods was gonna expand big, that, that land is still there.
Right.
But that's.
And that's, and that's a perfect place for a hotel, by the way.
Several places.
The other, the other thing is, with that Corporate Park, the nice thing about the prospects for a hotel there is business travelers.
Yeah.
You, you've got companies that do international business, Protector Wire is right, not too far away from there, and they do a huge business overseas.
Industrial.
In Asia, they've got people from Asia coming to Pembroke all the time. So there's, there's definitely a.
Over Marshall, this industrial, that whole, weird WATD is, there's a ton of stuff.
Exactly, there's a lot of good, good businesses that are international businesses, um, who would benefit from a hotel being close by, easy access to Logan Airport, when you think about it, down Route Three. Um, we've got a, I think, we've got a great space to attract something like that.
I always wonder if it makes sense.
You haven't driven on Route Three, haven't you?
Does it make sense for us also to even reach out? So the guy who was in here with Corporate Park, used to be his dad and now it's him, um, who came in asking to clear land.
Yeah.
To make it easier for people to envision what can happen on that land behind Stop and Shop.
Yeah.
So worth reaching out to someone like that and saying, hey, how are you doing?
Yeah, absolutely.
What can the town do?
Absolutely.
You know, what, what?
There, there, there's nothing that says we can't take, we can't take a proactive approach to that.
Murphy. Where was Brian now, it's not, it's not going anymore.
Brian Murphy? Is that his name? I can't remember.
What about, what about the, um, I know that it's a small chunk of land, but what about the, another raised ranch that was a septic place?
Yeah, yeah, that's a small piece.
That's a small.
I think, I think Tomasi bought that.
You think he did?
I think so.
I think there's people.
Who did?
I think Tomasi.
I was just wondering how to get that to develop to.
I thought you were saying.
You know, he, he's like, it's like deal for a couple of things.
Car dealership.
Car dealership, number one, I mean, car dealers today love.
The visibility on Route Three.
Exactly, you know, put Mercedes-Benz up there, et cetera, and you got thousands of cars going by, and they're more than willing to get off the highway and go to your place.
Perfect spot is across from Doggy Daycare, and then take that plan that goes right down to that, where they have the moving company.
Yeah.
That moving company is a lot of wasted property right there.
Huge.
All right, you could put a hotel with a conference, with conference rooms right in that, there's five lots in that.
Conference center, sure.
Conference center right there.
How much land does RK own on the backside by the, uh, one eighty-nine?
You mean where they just.
No, they, no, they only have enough for a building.
Yeah, there's not much there, cause it's right up against Route Three.
I see what they want, what they're quit, but that's all they own?
That's it.
I'm not even sure.
That's it.
I think they're gonna have to borrow some of the parking lot for Lowe's to do that, right?
No, no, they own that road.
No, I know, but where they can park cars.
They'll change, they'll change all the pocket, they'll probably pull that pocket right down, all the way up.
All the way out, and not use it as a road anymore.
Correct.
Right. So, from, from a perspective of the, the most desirable, I think that, that area there is the most desirable, and then we should think about some other parts of town where we've thought about zoning for memory care or for assisted living.
Like fifty-three.
Sandbaggies.
Yeah, um, which lend themselves to that kind of development because they're a little bit off the beaten track and they're kind of bucolic.
Yeah, plus the concrete company got sold and then.
But they've got good access, they still have good access.
We did propose, um.
Yeah.
Assistant living facilities for that area, but it was turned down at town, at town meeting.
So if we, if we had more of a justification for it?
Well, maybe if you had this like, you know, back a little bit.
Well, I think that.
Like, I think with the memory care, we had a real case in point, and that made that easier.
Well, I think we're looking for more assisted living.
Yeah.
The memory cares is.
It doesn't matter how.
Well, I think too, once we, once we turn.
We're all the same, they're all, yeah, they're all the same bag.
If you wanna put memory care on it, sounds like me.
Look at it from the perspective of the wealth, the wealth companies without a house.
Bigger player, bigger development potential.
Yeah.
What about, um, one thirty-nine?
One thirty-nine, actually, we not, uh, not built since, um, one thirty-nine, outside of where we were talking about, up at the, at the exit. How big, how big is the lot where the landscape supply that is behind, on Oak Street?
Which is I see.
No, no, not the I see, on the other, on the other side, on the east side of one thirty, uh, Route Three, there's a landscape, yeah, there, behind us.
Oh, right behind the bagel place.
Yeah. That goes back to the question that was raised here though about the non-residential frontage because of the naming of streets, for instance. That's a good example where the town has permitted business to go in, but you'll never see your new street as in the loud way.
Yeah.
But it may have.
And that happened several times, we gotta go back in and revisit that bylaw because you start getting into the particulars. You know, it's like a half a dozen streets in town named as adequate ways, and that's not the way it's occurring, it's not the way it's been built though.
Well, and, and that was.
It falls to the fence.
Attorney Gallo is saying there have been a lot of variances on that. And so the question is, at some point, if you give too many variances, you should change the rule.
Yes.
Shouldn't be a variance.
That's not a reason for denial either.
But, well, the vari.
All right. We might not want to go down this slippery slope.
Anyway, what I was going to say is.
Depending on how you use this.
As you guys are talking, it's occurring to me, I don't know about anybody else, that really what we're, we're talking about is master planning.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've been, but you know what? We've been here before, but the point to Tom's point is that, yeah, it's a very buildable site, that one that you're referring to. The one behind the movie, old movie theaters in Sherwin-Williams, et cetera, like five, six, seven acres in that area, it's fully buildable. You would have to literally take that section of the town, go lot by lot by lot essentially, to do a true presentation for something like this. And say, here's a buildable place, here's a buildable lot, here's a buildable lot.
It's allowable.
I'll tell you, they're looking for, if they could find a hundred thousand dollars in the Selectmen's Office this year of new revenue, they would be ecstatic.
They'd probably have it spent.
You know, ten years ago, when we were going through the subdivisions, we had members, Jerry Dempsey, you guys on the Z B A, astonished by the new growth rate of new growth being new revenue, not your population.
Right.
But new revenue growth, which is on the assessors department, you know, you've got your existing assessed base, and then all of a sudden you've got new growth.
Which is on top of your two percent.
Correct.
Two-and-a-half percent.
So if, the other night I'm listening to the Selectmen's meeting or something, I don't pay much attention to those things, but nonetheless, you know, they're looking at, oh, we have a pension liability of eight-hundred thousand dollars, it's going to crush us, it's going to hurt the party, whatever, I don't know what the real number is. But my point is, well, if you've got ten years to make up a million or two million or three, certainly helps if you've got two-hundred thousand dollars of new revenue growth per year for five years.
Come on in.
You follow this, huh?
Yeah.
I do, a hundred percent.
So all you really do is work and document that area up there and say, here's what could happen. And you're worried about either new taxes or two-and-a-half are override, or are you worried about new growth? Because new growth is not a two-and-a-half override.
New growth, we, is, is new growth.
Right.
Right.
New commercial growth is a little too.
Let's put it that way, residences typically run more to the benefit of the community.
The trees?
It's all your fault.
But, but I, part of, part of what I think is, well, this is all the more work into the test, some of that short-term money.
Just talking about the plans, distribution process, yeah.
So that you can bring in the long-term money.
I don't disagree with that, but we, we, we can't wait for another master plan to get started.
I don't know.
You mean in terms of getting some growth in quickly? And you're saying there's already plans on the books and bylaws on the books and money?
Well, we, we may need to change some bylaws or some zoning in certain parts of town.
But not the area we're talking about.
But it's not impossible to do.
No, but it's tough, it's tough.
I know, but it's not, it's not impossible to do, so it's something we should put on the table. And a lot of the things that a new master plan would uncover, things that the last master plan already uncovered. So, so, I, you know, I think the idea is to really get started on it because we know where the areas are where we can attract that kind of revenue.
I think you could have stopped looking at twenty-seventh.
Well, I'm thinking hotels could separate them from local tax.
But also brings in, also brings in other business.
Also more room tax money.
Well, brings in room tax money, but it also brings in other business like restaurants.
These little spinoffs, if we're going to come out of that, but when we looked at this initially and we went back to the business community at that time, we did a master.
It's hard to change it once you've.
Twelve, fourteen, thirteen years ago, whatever. We brought them into the discussion, if you recall, the Murphys.
Yep.
What do you think you need, type thing, you know, discussion. I mean, just, and I'll just kind of say something, I know we have fellow ears for purposes. We like the four stories from two-and-a-half stories, a home, for instance, that would attract business, right? And we were told that, it wasn't just a guess. We said, well, you know, if you raise that building height level, you know, you might attract a hotel, for instance. Well, now these types of steps going forward might be the types of things that we have to reconsider because, well, what if we said it's six stories, eight stories?
How does a, thinking of a hotel, learn about that?
Where does that end?
Well, that's it, I think we need to.
We got to bring in new ideas to keep.
Maybe there's just so many people with a two-story height restriction that not even know we have a four-story height restriction. All right. And would be willing to go to six in that area.
So maybe I can have coffee with you before we.
Again.
All right, so, sir, are those asphalt plans in your hands?
So I just wanted to check in to see, you know, how you guys wanted to run the process.
Yeah.
This is our first asphalt process in Pembroke, so. Do you want us to distribute them to different boards or, I know Peter's going to get a copy to review, you guys obviously need a copy to review.
Yeah, do we want to do a, a site? Do you guys have questions? Firstly, I have Peter Golda good.
Okay.
Yeah.
The D P W too.
What, well, we typically have a plan board assistant distributing the plan.
Yes.
Yes.
How many copies is supposed to be though? How many copies is supposed to be?
I thought there was seventy-seven.
Seven.
Okay. So I have four here, I'll get you more, obviously.
Is that the whole subdivision?
Yeah.
One of the questions we were talking about was timing.
Yeah.
Because we're kind of running tight against the timing for fall.
Yeah.
So we need the asphalt plans in.
He's got, he's got them right now.
No, no, but I mean, we need more copies to.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have them to you tomorrow. That's, that's, yeah.
Basically, you know.
I just wanted to check.
You don't have to approve everything and everything has to be done by the fifteenth of this month.
Correct, yeah, and I talked to Peter, I went over a little bit of the process with him, but like I said, I just wanted to check in here. And like, I don't mind pushing, you know, getting things out to different boards and stuff like that, to make sure everybody has what they need.
I think, I think the board may be thinking that, you know, we're looking for that stonewall area to be cleaned up and, and some other stuff, I think.
And that's actually, that is on the books, the, we just didn't want to see it until it cooled down a little bit, so that way it didn't just, it didn't burn out right away. We, I mean, we can do it now and then, you know, write a letter saying we'll do it again too, if that's more preferable to the board.
Well, I, I would tell you right now is that, is that right now.
Yeah.
Whether you think so or not.
Yeah.
Is actually the, I think it's the first two weeks, uh, first three weeks of August is actually the best time to seed.
Perfect.
All right, because you get high temperatures in, in the daytime, low temperatures at night, allows the seed to snap open, number one. But you're going to have to, you have to water it or hydroseed it. But the reality is, is that we normally want an established situation, so I would suggest you hydroseed it as soon as possible.
Sure.
Because if it isn't upgrowing by the time we go to accept it, I'll be voting no.
We usually want to see it go through a winter too.
Correct, but it's not, well, it's not, they haven't established anything. They haven't established anything yet. But the point is, is that right now, even though it's hot and dry, and the idea is you go out and you maintain it a little bit to get it established, but this is actually the right time.
Great.
I would also point out, I inspected the property recently, the road away. All the vertical granite curving up on the front.
Yep.
Particularly at the radius, all has to be filled, you know, pointed, yeah, pointed, made some point. And, and again, just the buttressing of the soils, et cetera, at that radius, everything else seems to be in pretty good shape.
Okay.
But I would pay attention to those things and at the cul-de-sac area, I think also you've got to take a look at some appointment, or appointment in there in terms of your cement work, et cetera.
Okay.
I think the way areas in that.
In the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would say the radius at the top of the street and the cul-de-sac area at the bottom of the street should get some attention. Otherwise, I thought it was in pretty good shape.
The other thing you got to realize is that, let's say this does go on to the docket to be accepted.
Mm-hmm.
All your catch basins have to be cleaned out. Your detention area has to be cleaned out.
Yep.
Make, make sure it's functional.
So.
So everything has to be like pristine before we're going to take and put it on the tax base.
That's, I think that's what Peter was talking about, and this, this, the step of the process here, we'll take all the comments.
Right.
And make sure that everything is net.
Plus the D P W will inspect it too.
Final punch list.
Right, right.
Excellent, all right, so you're going to get us more copies?
So I'm going to get you, you want eight copies then, just in case?
Eight copies sounds terrific.
Perfect. So I'll get you four more copies of this here, do you want me to leave?
You can leave that.
Yeah, leave those, yeah.
Okay, great.
Bring four more.
Great.
All right, great.
Thank you all.
So do you want me to do any distribution or Hillhan, Matthew will handle it.
Matthew.
Okay, great. If you guys would like to do a site walk with me, he has my number.
We'll make his.
Yep, absolutely, anytime.
We want to get Peter's report first.
Yeah, we'll get Peter and the, and the D P W to give.
Actually, I'm going to take one of these.
Peter and the D P W look at it before.
I'm going to bring you guys.
Did we see, did we see what the issues are? And we know what to look for.
Do we know what's in the engineering account in this case?
I can check the report in.
Yep.
I know we updated it with Maryland last, after the big paving, so like in the springtime, and we haven't had anything prepared since then besides a couple of small inspection reports, so it should be.
Should be something in.
Relatively full, yeah.
Okay, ample enough to cover mineral sawsheets.
Let's just make sure, make sure you understand one thing, if we're short on your account now and the Merrill bill came in, you'd be responsible for the payment.
All right, good, so, yeah, we got about forty-five-hundred in there.
All right, you have, you have sufficient.
Right, right.
All right, I'm happy with where we're at.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And then how do I collect the comments? Do I come in a couple of weeks to another meeting here or will?
We'll probably schedule it.
Well, we'll schedule a meeting with you at some point prior to the town meeting, which won't take effect until like laid up.
Right, right.
So we'd probably meet you roughly a month from now.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, beginning of September. And if Peter and I will talk more than to, if he had any big comments.
And everything's squared off and all the workmanship's been done and the, the things we just discussed.
I don't see any problem.
Can you just point out something real quick? One of our requirements is that all of the underground utilities are shown, plus or minus a foot horizontally and vertically.
Yeah.
There's none shown here.
Sure, great.
So they don't really have that, so.
No. We've got a hydro, we've got no water lines, no electric telephone, we need it all the way through, horizontal and vertical.
Got to do it all.
Okay.
So take those back.
Take all of them.
Have these refilled.
We have one just in case somebody wants to look at something.
Absolutely, all right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.